The school, the special school board meeting Monday, January 16th, 2023, is called to order at 6 o'clock PM. Looking at the roll call, we are all here, and so we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the agenda is relatively short, but we do have some discussion to be had. And the first thing we need to do is, we need to make this statement. Due to the resignation of school board member Tim Lewison effective January 11th, 2023, we need to make a motion to declare a vacancy on the board. So at this time, I am going to ask if someone will make, what we need to do is, we need to make a motion to declare that we have a vacancy on the board. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. And anybody make a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. At this time, we have a motion to declare a vacancy on the Leroy Ostrander School Board. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. I gave, I think everybody has one of these that's on the board here. Do you have them?
No idea.
Okay. So I attended Minnesota School Board Association Convention, as did a number of my colleagues here. It was great, it was a great convention. We all went to a lot of great classes. And one of the roundtables that I was able to attend is on the steps to fill a school board member vacancy, and there's a sample application and some sample interview questions. So, at the meeting, this is what I was, this is what I learned. First of all, the position will be, it will be effective from 30 days of the appointment. So we will, we will make an appointment, and I'll, we'll go through how that's going to happen, but we'll make an appointment. And then, there's 30 days from the time we appoint it until they can take seat. And that is, we have to, we have to make a public announcement that that's who's going to be seated. The public has an opportunity to respond. We have to wait 30 days. Okay, after that, the member that we seat, the school board member that we elect, that we appoint, will only be in office until the November special election. So it's, you know, it's about a seven-month period of time. At the November 11th election, we must post and elect a new school board member through the process of election. Okay. So, what they recommend is that we post that we have a vacancy. So tonight, we've made the motion that we have a vacancy on the board. Then we need to post that we have a vacancy, and that we will have applications available. The application is, they have a sample application down here that we can utilize. We can add some things to it if we want to, based on, on the back. It has data privacy considerations of what we can put on there, and just some sample questions, which we can talk about in a few minutes. But we need to post that we have a vacancy, and that we will be filling the board by appointment following the application process. Okay?
If that's the option we choose.
Huh?
If that's the option we choose.
It is what is recommended to us.
It could be recommended, but there's other options.
Yes, we can discuss that.
Yeah.
Okay.
If that's the option we choose, then that's the process.
All right.
Yep.
At this time, would we like to discuss what options we would like to look at for electing, or for appointing a new member to the board?
I do have a question, though. So as long as we're just filling out this first year of this term, does the board even have to appoint someone?
Yes. I asked a question, and it's confirmed.
If it's more than, if it's more than so many months away from the election, is that the, is that the process? Does anybody know?
It's within 90 days.
When I got on the board, Dave, I was filling a vacancy. And I might get the months off a little bit, but I think I was put on like in July or August, and I started in September, and I had to be reelected again that November. So I was on for pretty short.
I mean, this is almost a whole year, so I assume that there, an appointment has to be made. But I was just wondering what that timeframe is.
It's 90 days.
Is it three months, 90 days, three months? Okay.
And we're, we're outside of that perimeter.
We're almost a year.
Yeah. So, we do have to make an appointment. This is the, this is the process that was recommended to me by several members of the School Board Association and the class that I attended. Would anyone else like to discuss other?
Over the years, we've done it several different ways. We've taken a, I mean, I was actually appointed after I retired after 10 years. And then, somebody moved and resigned from the board, and basically, they just called me up and said, "If you want to come back on," and that was what we did. So that's, that's an option. Another option would be to go to the next highest vote getter from the election, which we're only 60 days away from. So actually, that would be my recommendation, to go to the next highest vote getter in the, in the past election last fall, and make that appointment. Obviously, those folks ran, they want to serve, so that takes, answers that question. The other thing that it does is, I think it takes away any type of favoritism that we, any of us might have, because that, I, I know that's come into play in the past as far as when we've appointed people. I think we've maybe appointed two or three in the time that I was on the board, so it doesn't happen very often.
You said, you said you had to do an application or an interview?
I, I just, yeah, I filled out a little short application, and then came to the board meeting and said, you know, why we were interested in being on the board, and then they went through a nominee. Somebody else got on that same year. Remember who it was, Angie?
I don't, but we did it two or three different times while we were on the board.
Yeah, yeah.
Did, which, did what?
Oh, yeah, Joe Ray Stockdale got on one time like that. Yep. And it was, it was like, all it was, was write a letter of interest, and then you come in and you answer the same questions that you would have answered in that school board forum or in the paper, and then it was just, somebody nominated you. There was no formal interview, application process. So the, the ones that we've been involved with, probably Pat and I both, have been more like to show a letter of interest.
Yeah.
That'd be another thing that I guess I didn't mention, is that those people that ran already kind of went through that process with the, with the candidate forum and all that kind of stuff, so. That, to me, that'd just be the simplest, easiest, cleanest, boom, we're done.
What kind of timeframe would be on this application process? I mean, something we would post for a week, accept applicants, and then we would have the time where we interview all of them together?
What, what the, what the recommendation was to me was that, post the vacancy, accept applications for about a week.
Yeah.
You know, that, so we have, we have our next board meeting on the 31st, our regular monthly meeting. At that time, or prior to that, all the board members have an opportunity to read the applications. And at that board meeting, each board member may make a nomi, nominate someone, and then there's a brief interview period. Can be done in public, or it can be done separately. And then, you take a roll call vote. So you have applications, you have about a week. Then we have a couple of days to look over the applications, then discuss it at a regular board meeting, using only the terms Candidate 1, Candidate 2, not the members' names. Then each board member can, by roll call vote, nominate one candidate. And from that pool of people, then you can do interviews, and then you can elect at the next, you can do a special meeting to elect, or appoint, I guess it's called. I think we make an election, and then we appoint them. Then from that point on, there's the 30-day time.
Yep, before they can take a seat.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So.
So we could be out two to three months, probably, before that person actually?
It probably would be.
Took office?
If we did a special meeting. Did we figure, we'd have by the March?
Be the end of February, early March, if you still choose, or wait till your March regular meeting.
And then you'd still have 30 days after that before they'd sit?
Nope, they would sit in March.
They would? So we'd, okay. Well, then we'd have to be done by the end of January, basically, to be?
To appoint, yes.
Or before the February meeting to get them on for the March meeting?
That's right, that's right.
If there's 30 days in there.
Right.
February's a short month.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it would be the right, we'd probably look at the regular meeting, then. That would make sense. Or close to.
Okay, so, the board, we have declared the vacancy, and now it is time for us to decide on a process to choose who to appoint. Do we want to have any further discussion on the process to choose to appoint?
I'll make a motion that we just go to the next highest vote getter from last fall's election.
I'd second that.
Okay.
If that person accepts, I guess, I guess we should clarify that.
From the November 2022 election?
Correct.
Okay, there has been a motion and a second, that the process we will use for appointing a new member is to go to the next highest vote getter in the November 26th, the November 2022 election. Okay, we have a first, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
You probably should ask for more discussion first, just a point of order.
Okay.
If, if there is any more.
Okay.
Sorry.
Would we like to have more, further discussion following this motion?
Personally, I would rather, I think we should do it the way we've always done it. Or, I shouldn't say always.
Yeah, because it hasn't always been the same way.
That's right. And, and open it up for nami, you know, people to apply, to see what interest there is.
One of the, one of the things they mentioned at the meeting was that this might open up the option of some people who have an interest, but maybe didn't have, feel they could make the four-year commitment, but they've always been interested. This gives them, gives them an option to participate in the school board. So that was one of the things that they were in favor of that. You directly just get the people who are interested in doing that short-term position. Okay, is there any further discussion?
I was thinking it's going to be four years, but it's not. It's one year.
It's less than a year, yeah.
Less than a year. Yep, that's right.
So.
That's right.
But that person that we appoint can also run.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Further discussion? Okay. There has been a motion and a second that we go, that we appoint the person who was the next highest vote getter in the November 2022 election. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, now someone would need to make a motion that we go with the application process to fill the vacancy.
And when will those applications have to be to the?
Well, Jen and I talked a little bit, if we were, if we were to go this route, that we could, I think we could get them out by, did we think we could get them out by the end of this week? Today's Wednesday.
Yeah, so I will not be available tomorrow in the district at all. But I could potentially, if I could get this sheet of paper as a Word document, I could work on it tomorrow night, and then send it to Deb, who then on Friday could go to Cass to have him post it, and get it on the website, also get it on our Facebook page, I would recommend.
Mm-hmm. If we had the applications come in by next Friday, that would give us Monday and Tuesday as board members to come in and review them. I think that would be the appropriate process, if you wanted to review the applications, that you would come in to the school and review them. And then?
They can't be emailed?
So that would be?
That's what I was thinking.
I don't know if they can.
The 27th?
Ken, I don't know about that. Huh?
You would say?
We need to find out if that can be an option.
Closing on the 27th.
Mm-hmm.
Then we can have discussion about it on our?
At the regular board meeting?
On the 31st, right?
Mm-hmm.
Slight subject change?
Yes.
So, that board meeting is also Parents Night for the basketball game. And that's going to affect a few of us, whether we do the old, take a recess when they're doing it thing, or what, I don't know. Or start a little earlier. I don't know how that works for everybody, but I just wanted you aware of that.
Probably the 31st. You guys can change it. We have, it's not posted. There's no legal posting yet. I just need three days to post for you.
And that's a Tuesday. How about we do it the 30th on Monday?
I don't have a school?
Just so you know, there's a double header that night for girls and boys.
The 30th?
Yeah.
On Monday.
Yeah.
Have a January meeting in February?
We're getting there, aren't we, Dave?
If we did it, if we, if we had our meeting next week, and then at that meeting, we could review the applications. We could feasibly have a special meeting just to discuss the applications and make that.
Oh, I see, you say just go ahead and have our board meeting next week?
What if we have our regular board meeting next week, next week sometime? I don't know. I don't have a school calendar with me right now, so. Is there a day or a date, or does anybody have a school board calendar that, or I mean, a school calendar that would show? My iPad gave up.
It's usually on Tuesdays, and that's always something going on Tuesdays, I'm sure.
What's next?
Boys, girls, double header again that Tuesday.
I think we're not going to be able to get away from that.
From all those research.
I think it would be best we could steer away from Parents Night.
Yeah, yeah.
We want to try something for next week? Do we want to go next, on Monday, the 30th? What would you guys like to do?
Well, if we go next week, that doesn't give much time for any, you know, applications.
Applications, truth.
Um, and if that's what we're wanting to do here, I think we need to give people fair amount of time to, to consider and fill out the application.
Either Monday, the 30th, or Wednesday, the 1st, is what I would say.
Monday, the 30th? Okay with everybody? Monday, the 30th?
That'll give us a whole week.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I'll find out if those, if the applications can be emailed. I just don't know the answer to that, so.
That'd be great if it could.
Yeah. All right. So, then let's go back and say, if, would someone like to make a motion that we fill the vacancy via appointment through application process?
And then, so I got this right. We're going to have the applications, we're going to look at them at our next school board meeting. And then are we going to have to have a special meeting after that to appoint somebody? Or are we going to do it, you know, if we have an, an interview process or whatever?
Each board member is supposed to have an opportunity to nominate one of the applicants. And from that, we can have informal or formal interviews that could happen that same night, but I don't think they could, because they wouldn't know. We'd have to have a?
So is that like a vote? And then you take the top? Because it seems like a vote to me.
It's, it's, um, each board member is allowed to nominate one candidate. So like, let's just say that we have 10 people who are going to do this, okay? And, or if you were in a big city, you might have a lot. You might have 30 people. You're not going to interview 30 people. So each member of the board has an opportunity to nominate a candidate. And they're like, Candidate 1, I nominate Candidate 10, okay? Some of us might agree, you know, there may be more than one person who wants to look at Candidate 1. You might end up having not that many to interview.
I guess I was just thinking in terms of, if we get one or two, you know?
I think if we get?
Know what I mean?
I think if we just get a small amount, we can just notify them to be there that night, and we can ask them some informal questions. Because the back, the back of this form has some sample questions that we can ask in the interview, in the application process. And then, if we only have a couple of applications, they can ju, we'll just tell them to please plan to attend the board meeting, and we can just do it all right there. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, because it was, it would, because, yeah, I wasn't thinking in terms of, we'd get 10 or 15 people, you know what I mean?
I know. I, I don't, you know, it's hard to say. And if we only had, like, I think if we could say safely, if we had like one, two, or three, we could just invite them all to be at the board meeting. Anyone?
I was just wondering if the questions could be part of the application process.
Well, they can.
Okay.
The, the sample question?
So then the interview is kind of done that way, so, you know what I mean?
On the back of this sheet, they have some sample questions that we can have.
No, I, yep, I understand it. But those would be, I, what I'm hearing from you is that those would be questions the board would ask those people?
No, these questions here are on the application.
Okay, all right.
These, these sample questions are on the application, and then the, the one that's listed as sample interview questions are additional. But we would have, and tonight, we would also decide, what questions do we want to have on the application? So when we get the application, we'll have their name, you know, this basic information here. They verify they're at least 21 years of age, a US citizen, those different things. And then we'll have a list of, we can choose, 1, 2, 3, 4. They didn't recommend more than that, um, questions. And then people can do a short answer, and then we have that to read, and, you know, possibly, we're all going to?
So the interview's kind of half-done in writing, basically?
Definitely, definitely.
So that's what I was getting, getting towards.
Definitely, yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
I'll make a motion that we, we post for the open position and for candidates to see who's interested in running.
Okay, I have a motion from Pat, a second?
I'll second. Go ahead.
Any further discussion?
Deb, who do you have down for a second? I'm sorry.
Dave.
Dave, okay, thank you.
So we, we get two or three, we'll bring them to the board meeting?
Correct.
We won't appoint them that night, will we?
We could.
Okay, all right.
We could. If we just have a, if we have just a few, and then we look at the applications, we, we could appoint them that night. That's how it happened to you, Pat.
I think it would be, yeah, it would be good if we could try to appoint somebody that night, and then they'll have their 30 days, and then they can get on the board and get up to speed.
And they could be on board in March, yeah, yeah.
And like what happened to you, Pat, was that the meeting was going to be like two days before your 30 days were up. Well, we could just schedule the meeting. Well, we have already the scheduled meetings, don't we?
It won't be a problem.
It won't be a problem. We'll make it happen. It'll?
Yeah.
All right. So. I have a motion. Chad, can you read back the motion that you said? Or who, are you taking, oh, who's clerk? Or is anybody, are you taking, what?
You made the motion, right?
Okay.
Pat made the motion to post for the?
Post, yeah. For the opening?
For the open school?
Utilizing the application process.
Yep.
Dave Arlinger seconded it. Have we had, are we good on discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right. Let's take a very quick look at the front side of the sample application. Name, phone number, email, address. Does any of that feel, does that all feel okay to you?
Yep, that's fine.
Requirements to hold office, that they have to have, be at least 21 years of age, US citizen, and eligible to vote. Resident of the school district 499 for at least 30 days. No record of criminal sexual misconduct for the resignation, which, for which resignation is required. And then they just signature that they meet those requirements, okay? And then we have to say what date and time we want this to be returned. Well, first of all, how are they going to be able to get it? Are we going to, are we going to post an application? Or do they have to come to school to get it?
How hard would it be to post it? That's what I think.
We can have hard copies.
Then they can print it.
You know, we'll have Cassidy, print off hard copies in case they want to stop in, that's great. Otherwise, yes, very easy to post online.
So hard copy's available in office, and also posted on school website, correct?
Yeah, that's our official post.
Yep, okay. All right, and then, return the completed application by?
Friday, the 27th?
Yeah.
Friday?
Friday, end of school, or?
Yeah.
Um, Friday, January 27th, 3 o'clock PM, do we want to go with?
Sure.
Okay. Are we good with that?
Yep.
All right. All right, and then we're going to have the meeting, our meeting on Monday?
30th.
January 30th?
Be regular time, right, 6?
6 o'clock?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Okay. And I'll find out if we can email you the applications to.
I'll look around, too.
Yeah.
See, otherwise, I can, I think I can figure out a spreadsheet to stick in there to make it kind of look similar, anyway, because it'll go on our district letterhead. I want it to look like Leroy, so we'll make it look nice.
And then when, initially, if we, initially, we'll have to clarify, depending on how many people we have, we'll have to clarify whether we're going to refer to them as applicant one, applicant two, applicant three, or if we're past that, if we only have a couple of applicants, we might be able to go to names directly.
Typically, when we have done that, it's how they have come into the district. So for example, if Chad, you would apply for a teaching position here, and you're the first one to come in at twelve oh one, I would put applicant one, or candidate one.
Right, right.
So we could actually, if you, if you so choose, the board so chooses, we could do that, or you and Cass could do that?
Yeah.
On Friday. How they came in, you guys could put applicant one.
Cass can maybe mark it as they come in. And then, but what I'm saying is, but how we refer to them when we're speaking is.
You must do that.
At which point do we say names?
Once it's offered. Once a motion is made.
Okay, yep. All right, so.
Will, will we have an opportunity to review the applications over the weekend?
Yes. And I'm going to find out whether we need to have come into the office to look at them, or whether we can send them by email. I don't know the answer to that, but I'll find out by Friday. Okay. All right. All right, so the next step is choosing how, how and what we want the sample questions to be.
I think if you just ask them four questions, I don't think they'll take that much to fill out.
Those look fine to me.
Yeah.
That'll give you a pretty good background, so.
Okay. So are we feel good with those questions that are there, the sample questions?
That looks fine.
Okay. All right. Is there any further questions regarding the application process? Got it? Any further discussion? Okay, then I will be open to taking a motion for adjournment. Oh, we don't have.
Chairman, could I just be allowed to say something?
Um, I don't believe we can. We don't have public comment during a special board meeting.
Okay.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Opposed?